Okay, now I'll call. The work session for Tuesday, May 7th, budget work session, City Council, can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
Here.
Here. Motion to excuse Councilman Page. Good motion, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's excused. Item number four is the consolidated budget review. Are we going to skip to page 25 or beginning?
So it's showing us these projections that we have by the way. Which is anywhere from 10 to 20, and which is really, 40%. We find a protection on the, if that's about what it is. We do see our movies with the, so we will be focusing on the. And it's going to compensate around the, but we do want to be prepared with this. I feel we're giving, and as we know, in our, to make sense. In principle, over the, we are still, when you give them to the, and our, that happens to, um, next week, we have, and we buy them. It was a, we're, we're, and we need to, um, our part. Our, our, so, certainly, we want to stay up, so, I mean, I think, if we consider, once, and then we, we, like, certain, and we, 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 we. We will also be, um, the future of our, for time, and strong, we ensure that, and I think, more out of that, and, um. By getting, we show some of the, ultimately, um, started to, by the time, the process. Also, we'll have to, we're, and, since we do, on how it's going to, we are also looking and discuss, um, the solid base. At, depending on, that, completely, we are, the, of, um, we expect, I think, that it would, when, right?
Something stupid. It's one of that. All of us, it's about services is not in here, some of them used to be in the.
Mm hmm.
We can still. We have. One. Um, we we can extend. So it's just what our our public for uh good business day, we love it. For. Yes, I think they're still doing too much. They're doing. They can't even back to the main course and words. And I mean, like, yeah, we. So. That's how we do the thing. But we can be the last thing. If you think about it, I don't. I didn't know that I come in here. And then I worked out and I went on my way. Right now, we made out uh a little bit of a big dollar as your for uh website. See, that's. And there may be another maybe for us, they've done some. The holidays that have happened in this government where there's there's. It's considered only members without all their reading program about the. We have a. How long have we had other software that means that smart uh citizens have. Larger. City and some of the. families. Many visitors. And so we are. President, we are out to the past. And you know, let's say. You have. Another thing that was because of activities is a city we landed. For this non minimum. This is something for your consideration. Obviously, it's not good for us. Feeling very um going to be. I'm thinking of outcome and different ways of having a plan. And that's an opportunity to better support the development work period. And hope to you, like you always say, that the. And want the development to really. Define with over the time and value population, which I think is kind of understanding. And the other one, sometimes we're laughing at the. And it's very. We're not. It's about the problem of the time. Because the answer is something I don't know. I don't know. Let's have. Certainly consumed. From all the words. We're on the way. Really, not. Not the greatest. Um, so that would be worth consideration at thirty thousand for city when. There's a there's some end of edition of thirty thousand. And sixteen thousand, sixty two years. But in relation to that would be. We want.
No, I think that that's, I think that's really good. I think the way you just described it is exactly how I see it. And I, I, your design and marketing stuff, which is seeing. We know making wood in the field, but we don't necessarily project that in all of our imagery that we have for the span, you know, it's. I would love to see a rebrand. I think that would be. Really good.
And that cost is on.
Yeah. That's. Pretty fair.
So we were down on the third seven uh federal bank. He did one of these for you. In the audience area of where he's. How tall then? In the three events. She has. On the partnership that he was in. In the twinner and all of the. But we pretend. One year we would get. Thousand dollars. And things for. And obviously, if they don't.
You can move the uh. Move with the mayor if you move that up one, the four hundred dollars to L D resource. Here.
So probably. If we sort of.
Yeah. Uh, al- also, we. I think we took over six, six oh three seven oh, emergency social services. I'm not familiar with the budget, the five thousand dollars that's uh. Allocated, what, what is that used for?
For. Five thousand.
But the five thousand.
Sometimes it's like an emergency thousand. Mm hmm. Mm hmm.
Yeah. Also, the government. Outside the city, so. But there are circumstances where we. We don't. So. The first is that when. And there are. The other thing, the first thing, of course, when you go. So let them know. If.
Yeah.
On both.
Yes. Yeah.
If you need. All this. The people that you. First time. Family. The person. Seventeen years. I know that.
No.
That's all.
Yeah.
That's great.
So. Uh. That. Second story. Um, I will go your time on the. Five, concerning workshops, where executives. This is where um we started to others. Some of the staff was maybe I do training. I identified someone welcoming to the. A decision. Probably the student under the savings that. And looking at lower costs further out, these capabilities, this record trying to store trying to. So they'll even sort of. Figure out a hotel. On the table. Which has never. Put. You know. Single three. He's planning twenty forty four. We're going to. To all staff. And all. He's he's. I'm trying to be practical that way. So I'm, I'm not by the money that I see any of this. So that all goes back. For you over here. So. One thing I also want to know is we're looking at. Of of something that it can be a view over here. To the the organization of position for another department from me. Decision. With that certain.
Well, I'm, I'm thirty one social services coordinator, fifty percent by. Richmond Heights, so that's the total. Salary seventy six.
Yeah.
Hmm.
They have.
On page thirty two. Line items, six oh two, six zero, insurance and bonds. Uh, what, what accounts for the volatility of the uh? These numbers are all over the place.
So we have to have this brand of view. And. Is. Um, the one thing that was called are these. The more. Um. Often people. We found state of. Um, and. Um. We could do. Put you on Friday. Yes. Um, Friday, it's. Somebody decided that everybody sort of getting along, having. For. Which is. That um talking about. What is it? As a sooner, seven thousand dollars. For. Twenty. Um, we also. Hold it these days. We send that. So we bought this on very high over. Significantly that low. And this is. We have to be. They don't have this policy in higher. Most. I. I don't know what you mean. Because I think that. Now, I'm sorry that you're going to need to consider this. Thousand dollars to three, 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 twenty, twenty, thirty. How it is being. We thought we could go in three, two, nine, twenty, twenty, ten, beginning of the state. So and this is why around the last couple of years, it's come around six hundred thousand. Basically, we go when you have forty, forty more thousand dollars, you're starting to put them on that. Why the gentleman? I still ask. And why was so high before? You have had. Or we had bonds for. I think because people into. Fourty years. Things in the. They have a bond. They have a. And bonds. But if you want to. Without that. So it is. They can just. Maybe they just. We tried to. And the bond we have that. On stores. Nobody uses it anymore. Did you know? They have movies on. And it's. We just. And. Oh, we know. We'll see. Cyber one. Never. Followed on. I think maybe this is a very. Interesting. If we can say stuff. Hardly do it. That's just never. Not one. They've been. And they. Give them. If you have. Instead of. We can have them. We never.
Yeah.
Say.
Yeah.
The best part of the thing is rock. Because you put things. Never like. It's. And I, I. And it's quite a great. Academy. Doing that. Cyber. Cocked. From. They are. The. So if you're talking about. That's like, that's kind of. They're having a. Talk. Um, we are waiting. If you're. On stage about. First.
Is that a, a state cooperative uh?
Local?
Uh, on, on the insurance is uh, is it a full? Uh, insurance program? Locally or state or county or?
We use um particularly. We like. We try not to. He's coming speaking. And stuff. He. Actually. You know, so to. The. We're the ones that we have to. Like. Go. Do. I'm. Have to get. We never lie. It's. When I go for. We had most time as our teachers. I just mean, I have been. And um.
It's a nice little monopoly that job has.
Nothing.
Yes.
We can.
Yes.
You know.
Going, going down to six oh three, six oh. Uh, miscellaneous other. Uh. That, that number seems to. Uh. Be very volatile and then it, it tapers off of two thousand. What kind of uh expenses are in the food here?
We both. Um, the contract that we have.
Yeah.
We have that. Yes, we have to. First, you ask that about building. And if you do that, please. So initially, we're. This and that stays. Higher menus. So a lot of things that kind of don't there. Because they can't hold their. We come in the back. And then we're. So um. We live in a lot of differences for the United States. We maybe you said what they would think regards. We didn't see that. We bunch of them got. And that was. Just. Coming to the last. So I can have this.
With regards to the new uh accounting software. Will you be using the same? Line items or it? Does it have its own? Uh. Format?
For that. We're also. President software. Yeah. So. Yes. There's. Very. Because that's. We don't learn to. They come through.
Yeah, and I remember from the last year's budget review, um. You had extensively worked on getting this kind of like. Here is a bucket for expenses where things actually should go into other categories. I really like that we're still. Picking at that to have more accuracy.
But you can. Change.
Mm hmm. Yeah. So I really appreciate that.
Yeah. There's uh. The legal council. It was pretty. Um, I believe now that. Take care of. I. So. For now. So. I think that we. Thank you. Why we don't. When you. Or when you're. The. We probably. Maybe this. It's. We want to. But I didn't. I think. To do.
Mm hmm.
I mean. Okay. It's. I enjoyed. But still, I'm. And I'm. Feel. Things. Or if it's not finished. A lot, a lot of. Going. There, there hasn't been. A lot. Things. I don't. I wasn't. Any kind of. Being. That I got. You know. Listen. Right. I don't think that's. I don't know. Want to go to. Whatever. I don't know. How that been done. It does not. It does not. You see when you. If the. If you try to get all of those conversations to go all at once. See one conversation, see one email and get all of that in one. Like the. One of the. You could go. I think one minute. You got it. As opposed to one thirty minutes. You just do all of that.
Mm hmm.
But it's. Kind of. Really. We. We're giving you. Thanks.
For the um, for the six oh five three O line on page thirty two with like telephone. Um. Do we still use like an actual line service? Are we using voice over internet? We know. Perfect. Mm hmm. Oh, okay, power will go out.
I can.
There probably are like, yes, the battery backup in then or some sorts of crap, so.
You're being taken. Yeah. We.
Mm hmm.
Often about. You could say. And. Oh, no, we can still. Phone. What? When I'm on the. Elevator. Maybe.
I mean, full disclosure, my job, we had a brownout when I was in the elevator and I tried calling. And the response was, what do you expect us to do about it? And I was like, well, I'm. Somewhere between the fourth and seventh floor, can you do anything? So I'm not sure what the phone does.
Yeah.
Sure.
That's.
Thanks, I'm glad.
Good to know you're there.
There's a false security of that one.
But we're. So. That we. The one that we were saying are. So I just. We have. The. Power. So. And not. It was. And as I know, there's. The numbers. Any piece of. I mean. Fifty five. One. And we used. Three. For those. And clearly, um. I was in a. Stress. For. And then the. At that. We're not. Come.
On, on the uh. Judges conference. Uh, if we go with Doug, then we should be splitting that cost with the city.
We.
Yeah. Well, it's a minor cost, but.
Mm hmm.
Yes, uh. You. And also the provisional. Judge. Uh. We got that. Yesterday and today.
I think it was.
I'll. That's what it was. Also, it's. The. This is.
Mm hmm.
Right. Thinking of. We've about it.
And with regards to city attorney. Uh. My understanding is that they're getting a lot of calls from boards and commissions, from council members. I don't, I don't know exactly myself, but yeah. I think everything should go through the city manager. Uh, any communication with uh. Any legal counsel. Uh. And I, I don't know the nature of, of the uh. You know, of the calls, but. We want to. You know, not only do we want to minimize the. Uh. Conversations with legal counsel, but. You know, Amber needs to. You know, know what's going on so she can adequately do the city.
Okay. Last year. I was. So that's probably. Some of what we're doing. Uh. The. Work. So we did. There was. Really. They. They're ready.
They're also. Probably.
I think like. You suggested earlier, if you do collective. Questioning does seem to be more efficient. Smart. Smart move. If possible, yeah. Yeah.
Sounds very efficient. I mean, that's a compliment.
I used to always love the lawyers hit my voicemail. It's cheaper than to just leave you a message with information when to talk. How's your family? I'm not paying for that.
Too cheap for you.
Yeah.
There looks like seventy three, yes.
But in.
That it's fun.
Part. Which part of the.
Yeah.
Yeah. And. So on materials and supplies. Um, we are slightly going down the. Fugitive. The. Commission. It's. Some. Funds. And she. Rebeing the law in seventy one hundred. It's. It's. And so. We have funds. But we are too high to work that. Um. And then there are funds in next year's. To. Public. You know. Which publicly. The. So the city. Think that makes it about. On credit area and ordering plants and getting ready to uh. They're being served. And then we will partner. How good the spirit. The thing that it's. Just pay. To. They want to. Continue. Yeah.
I love that.
Mm hmm.
Um, and then if you go into other services, I guess it's kind of, this is a couple of things that are together. We like the advertising of the event. And so. And that. So um advertising, we've left it on um professional services. The uh. Professional services. We are. In the. This year. We have. Money. Like on balance. We have a. And the reason we're looking into that is we are going to. For. Um. And we will have. Come out of professional services. And then you'll have the actual. Construction. Uh, we also are going to be updating our. We can say their services.